Good evening. The Taunton School Committee of the whole meal should come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Fagan.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
And roll call Secretary Fagan.
Mr. Laura.
President.
Mr. George.
President.
Mr. Viera.
President.
Mr. Fiore.
President.
Ms. Fagans, President and Chairman, Dr. DeMello.
President. Thank you so much. Good evening once again to everyone. As a school committee member, my colleagues, of course, take this night as one of the most precious nights of how we serve our students and their families. So, thank you all for being here. I think this is one of the largest turnouts we've seen in a long time. So, we really appreciate your attendance. So, we'll get the program started, and we're going to revert right over to the school committee recognition of students in Taunton Public Schools. And first up, we have the East Taunton Elementary School, which is Principal Claudine Nichols.
Good evening. Is it on? Oh, yes, it is, sorry. I'm speaking on behalf of my very shy colleagues who are not present tonight, but I hope you understand the message that we're portraying. Inclusion is defined as the action of including or being included within a group. To say that these three students have been walking examples of this definition would be an understatement. Throughout the school year, these fourth grade students, Kenzie Sawicki, Paisley De Vega, and Lorna Angulo, have shown students in the RISE program at East Taunton Elementary School kindness and compassion that you truly cannot teach. In the beginning of the school year, safety patrol assignments were given to Lenora and Paisley, and they were assigned to help out near the van hallway. Slowly each day, we noticed them getting closer and closer to the van waiting room, until one day they asked to come in and spend time with our students. Since then, they've never looked back. When a van is running late and students begin to get upset, they sit with them, they console them, they comfort, they give hugs, they share kind words, and they provide assurance that the van will be there soon. Now, mind you, this is something that staff also do, but somehow other students listen to students more so than us. And when it's coming from these girls, it's very meaningful. If a student is struggling with their coat or backpack, these students are there to help. Kenzie rides a van with few of the RISE students, and they have formed a meaningful bond. The students get visibly excited when Kenzie comes into the classroom. She will immediately sit with them and comfort them when they're upset. She makes the children both in the classroom and on the van feel more comfortable and supported. She will also pop up in the classroom to just say hello to the students during the day, which causes all of them to smile. For me personally, this is something that Kenzie doesn't know, but a few weeks ago, I was down the hallway talking with another student. Now, out of the corner of my eye, I could see Kenzie, there she was, in the background, calmly helping a student get his coat on, one arm at a time. They didn't say much to each other, but there was a comforting feeling that she gave the student. She then put his backpack on him, took his hand, and walked him down the hallway. These are the things that we don't come out and ask them to do, but these students know what others need and put these students first before them. Having compassion is not something you teach. You have it in you, and you lead by example. All three of these students have been an incredible asset to the East Taunton Elementary RISE community, and we're so grateful that they're part of our family. Thank you, ladies.
Wonderful. Before moving on to our second recognition, I'd like to introduce Superintendent John Cabral. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. And Dr. DeMello is correct. I cannot remember the last time we had such an amazing turnout. So, I want to thank all the caregivers, all the students for being with us this evening. Tonight is a special night for my family, as you'll see later in the program. But again, we do a lot of great work here in Taunton, and unfortunately, there are some times where the local media or sometimes the press doesn't always pick up on the outstanding work, but we are very blessed to have the amazing students and the amazing caregivers who contribute to our school system and contribute to our community. I'd also like to introduce my leadership team, so I want to ask them to stand up and give a quick wave. First is Stephanie Hoy, Director of Transportation and Student Services. Amy Moynihan, Director of Special Education. Brenda Moynihan, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. And Christopher Barata, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. So, these are the people, the administrators, who help support our principals and support our directors, and we do a lot of the work behind the scenes. So, if you don't notice us, that means we're doing a good job, which means we're doing our job. So, without further ado, we'll revert back to the program.
Thank you Superintendent Cabral. Next up, from the Joseph H. Martin Middle School, we have Teacher TJ Mills.
Thank you for this opportunity to recognize some of our students. The five high schoolers that I have here are sophomores and juniors at Taunton High, and I think they're a great example of some of what our students do to contribute so much to our school communities. So, these five students have been helping out throughout this school year with our Helping Hands Club at Martin. So, Helping Hands is a group all about kindness and service, kind of encouraging positivity and encouragement within our school and within the local community. And so, four of them were my students at Martin when they were in seventh grade, and all five of them have been really invaluable to our group this year. So, every week, they're there to help plan meetings, to help run meetings. We can have anywhere from fifteen to fifty middle schoolers at the meetings, and these guys really help make it happen. So, they're help running clothing drives, animal shelter drives, filming and editing videos, creating posters, managing Instagram, planning our Kindness Week events, whatever activities we're doing, these guys make it happen. So, McKenna Krail is our longest-serving Helping Hands veteran of the crew. She was in Helping Hands in early days when she was in seventh grade, and she's been reliable every single week, and just provides an example of kindness to our middle schoolers, kind of helping guide them and lead them. Ava Brooks and Savannah Maxley were in seventh grade in the spring of 2020 when COVID first struck, and within two weeks of schools being shut down, they reached out to me and wanted to keep Helping Hands going. They said they just felt powerless and things are just so dark right now, what can we do to bring some good? And they helped keep Helping Hands going throughout COVID. We met remotely for over a year, and almost every single week, we kept meeting. Isaiah Brooks and Landed Morgado started this year helping with Helping Hands, right at the beginning of the year. Isaiah wasn't involved with Helping Hands as a seventh grader, but he jumped right into it this year. Landed didn't even go to Martin, but he has still been invaluable to the group. The two of them have kind of helped create some of our best ideas that we've had this year. I think all five of them are just excellent examples of service and leadership, and I know our middle schoolers look up to all of you guys as role models. They're the main reason our group is able to thrive. So, I thank you guys for all you do, and I'm delighted to recognize you here.
Wonderful. Next up, from the Taunton Alternative High School, we have Principal Bert Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Standing with me tonight is Lady Anna Martinez. She's a junior at Taunton Alternative High School. The staff at Taunton Alternative High School is recognizing Lady Anna tonight for going above and beyond, excuse me, in our junior achievement program. The committee, certainly Mr. Cabral, has heard me speak in the past about our junior achievement program, which in the two years that the Alternative High School has been involved in it, I think we've done pretty good, and you're going to hear a lot more of that. About halfway through the school year, two of our leaders of our junior achievement program had to step aside. One young man unfortunately had to move, and the other one had job commitments outside of school. So, at that point, we really thought, I thought I'd be calling Mr. Cabral and saying, "Look, we can't do junior achievement anymore." But within a matter of an hour, Lady Anna stepped up as a ranking member of the junior achievement team and just took control. As I've noticed tonight, a lot of her former assistant principals, teachers have come up to her to congratulate her. She's like, "Mr. D, they're probably coming up to tell me that I owe them detention or something from way back." But Lady stepped up when we needed someone the most, as a true leader would, and just took over. It was a breath of fresh air. I could sit here an hour, an hour, an hour, and tell you how wonderful of a kid she is, but I want to hear the other stories that are in this room. But without Lady, and without her commitment to our school and our program, junior achievement wouldn't have happened. It culminated in about two weeks ago, we went down to UMass Dartmouth with Mr. Holcomb's team from Taunton High, teams from New Bedford, teams from Durfee, and we're only a hundred and ten schools, a hundred and ten student school, and we went up against schools with thousands of kids. And I can tell you, we didn't place, but I will tell you this much, Lady Anna and some of our other students left the crowd breathless. It's a great honor to be an administrator and educator in this district. I love this night every time, a couple of times a year, we hear the good as Mr. Cabral talked about. But when I can stand in front of you with a student like Lady Anna, her family's in the background, we have her sister who's an alumni, she's in the back, it just reaffirms why I chose to work in Taunton and why I'll continue to work in Taunton. It gives me great honor and great privilege to represent, forward to you, Lady Anna Martinez. Lady Anna.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Next up, from the Taunton High School, we have two presentations by Assistant Principal Dominique Williams, first for the student recognition and then for a staff member recognition. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. As the Taunton community knows, over the last couple of months, we've welcomed a substantial amount of families, particularly from the Haitian community, into our community in Taunton, as well as into the school system. And I want to recognize six students and one staff member. Some of them couldn't make it tonight due to prior obligations, but I'm going to start with Sterri Simon, LaTicia Lopes, who's here, Arainu DeAndre, Laura Andre, Rashmir Etienne, Az, St. Mark, Pierre Louis, and Natalie Marumbe, and Ms. Julian Luchetti, who's one of our guidance counselors here. So, maybe with over the last couple of months, we've received, not received, but we've welcomed over seventeen students who are from another country and welcomed them into our school. These students and Ms. Luchetti has provided substantial amount of support, resources, and just all-around wraparound services, what I call wraparound services, from transportation to academic support and just building relationships with students in the building. They've helped with everything from translation services to tours, walking them to the vans, even sitting with them at lunch, I'm sorry, and tech support with their Chromebooks. There's nothing more heartwarming than seeing these students build bonds and relationships with students who are welcomed into this country and smiling, giving high fives, building bonds and relationships. When I first came to Taunton, there's a slogan that's painted on the wall outside of Bee House that says, "A connected student is a better student," and this is a prime example of what a connected student does, to welcome seventeen students into our community, not just into our school, but into our family. And I couldn't, we couldn't have done it without the help of Ms. Julian Luchetti and these six students. So, I would like to recognize them at this moment, not for their efforts, but just being good people. And a few of them are seniors, and they will be graduating, and I'm excited to see what they will do with their life, because if this is what they can do in the four years here or five years here at Taunton High School, I'm excited to see what they do in the next forty years of their life. So, at this time, I'd just like to welcome them and thank them all for everything they do, including Ms. Luchetti. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next up, from Taunton High School, we have Ms. Sarah Gibson.
Good evening. So, I have three separate recognitions in one, three for one. The first individual I'm going to talk about tonight is a senior in our culinary program, and she had senior privilege this year, F-block, but she had the privilege, I guess, chose to use her senior privilege and helped me out in the kitchen. So, she could have gone home, she stayed, she created her own projects, she reinvented our herb wall, and she planted a bunch of herbs that we used in the kitchen, just all on her own one day, she did it. She, any time that I had, you know, Tiger Den was over, and we had soup that needed to be wrapped up, we had a catering in the afternoon, and I taught another class, she would go into the kitchen and finish everything up, and she, I couldn't have gotten through this year without her. She's been a tremendous help, F-block, when, you know, I was teaching another class and I needed things done in the kitchen. So, thank you for everything that you have done this year, all the dishes she had, she reorganized the dish rack without me asking, she just did it, and I know it sounds small, but it's really a big deal. And so, she just kind of took her own time during her senior privilege to help us out in the kitchen, and so I appreciate her very much for all her hard work. So, thank you. Okay, next up, I have my two Pro Start teams. So, for those who are unfamiliar, the Massachusetts Restaurant Association, every year sets forth a curriculum, also a competition for students in both culinary and restaurant management. And so, this past year, we have two junior team and a senior team that competed and put in hundreds of hours of practices, creating restaurant, unique and individual restaurant concepts that they created a menu for, and marketing concepts, costing, and a whole, essentially twenty-three, twenty-four page business proposal, and presented it in March to an esteemed panel of judges, chefs from all over the state of Massachusetts. And they did phenomenal. They were incredible, and you would have thought that this restaurant was real and that they had opened it and worked there every single day. And I was very, very proud of them, and they came in. The senior team of Kaya Leonard, Israel Cruz, Tatum Doment, and Jonathan Henderson came in second at the state competition. And the junior team of Stephanie Brito, Samuel Cadet, Madison Coit, and Nicholas Woodward, who had his appendix out over the weekend, so he's not here, but he was a part of the team, and so congratulations, you did fabulous. So, thank you. Okay, and last but not least, I have two of the three, Nick is also going, he's also a part of the Skills National Team. So, the two students standing here are seniors, and not only have they been chapter officers for Taunton High Skills USA and been a part of it almost their entire high school career and put in hours going to leadership conferences and running our chapter, but they also achieved gold medals at district, gold medals at state in audio, radio, and will be a part of the Massachusetts National Team representing Taunton High School and the state of Massachusetts in Nationals in Atlanta in June. So, we wish them the best of luck, thank them for all their hard work, and hopefully we'll come back with more awards. So, Felicia Dias. Christian Santos. And then Nick, who's not here, will be representing Massachusetts as a national voting delegate. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Before we go on to the Taunton High School recognition, I'd like to introduce the members of the school committee from on my left, starting with Mr. Louis Laura, Mr. Derek George, Stephen Viera, Secretary Christine Fagan, Jordan Fiore, Nate Pawalski, and unable to be here tonight, Gil Enos. Thank you. So, from Taunton High School, they deserve a round of applause, absolutely. From Taunton High School, I have Ms. Ashley Pacico-Gilmet, and World Language Educators.
Buenas noches. Buonanotte. Bonam vesperam, my Latin is a little rusty, and good evening. And I think I forgot, bonjour, bonjour, my French is a little rusty as well. It is a privilege to stand before you today to recognize the accomplishments of some outstanding students in our World Language Program at Taunton High School. This year, one hundred and twenty-three of our Taunton High School students competed in the National Spanish, National Portuguese, National French, and National Latin exams. And this evening, we are celebrating twenty-five of them who attained national recognition for their exceptional performance. When I call your name, you can please approach the podium to get your certificates and medals. I will begin with Spanish. The National Spanish exam was administered to approximately four thousand middle and high school students throughout the United States. Out of our sixty-four students who participated this year in the National Spanish exam, sixteen of them earned national recognition. On the Level One exam, Jamie Bear, Gregory Westberg, and Keira Wapensky earned honorable mention. Please approach the podium. Patricia Andre earned a bronze medal, Gabriela Oliveira earned a silver medal, and our new Silva earned a gold medal. On the Level Two exam, Narita Hemingway and Camia Jordan earned honorable mention, Megan Singh and Liam Hines earned bronze medals. On the Level Three exam, Mairead Flood earned honorable mention, Aiden Montero earned a bronze medal, and LaTicia Lopes earned a gold medal. And last, but certainly not least, on the Spanish exam, on the Level Five exam, Brendan Brown earned a silver medal. Maddie Westgate and Carla Rafael also earned some important awards for Spanish, so if you are here, please come on to the podium. And National Spanish winners, do you want to go ahead and shake the hands of the school committee members? Nice warm round of applause for the Spanish, the Spanish winners. Now, on to the National Portuguese exam. The National Portuguese exam was administered to approximately three hundred and fifty students throughout the United States. Out of the four hundred, out of the forty-six students who participated this year, four of them earned national recognition. On the Level One exam, Alison Ponch Diaz and Briana Tirano both earned gold medals. On the Level Two exam, Job Dial Burgos earned honorable mention, and Keylani Da Silva earned a bronze medal. On to the National Latin exam. This test is administered annually to approximately a hundred and fifty thousand students in all fifty states and around the world. Out of our nineteen students who participated, eight of them earned national recognition. I know quite a few of them are not here tonight, but we're still going to give them the recognition and say their names. On the Level One exam, Charlotte Post and Channing Montgomery earned cum laude, Auzi Email earned magna cum laude, and Caitlin Lincoln earned gold summa cum laude. If you're here, come on up. If you're here, come on up. On the Level 2 exam, Lucian Mikkelwet earned magna cum laude, while Madeline Cabral and Emerson DePonte earned silver maxima cum laude. And on the Level 3 exam, Natalie Duncan earned silver maxima cum laude. And that's it for the Latin winners. And to end our recognition tonight, we want to recognize our national French exam winner. This contest, the national French contest, is administered to approximately 85,000 students in the nation annually. Out of our five students who participated this year, Alia Fezhu earned a bronze medal. Tigers, we are so very proud of you and all of your accomplishments. You truly are cultural ambassadors for the city of Taunton. And I also want to give a big shout out to all of the world language teachers for teaching these students, especially Mrs. Yasmeen Portella and Ms. Veronica George, who are here with me tonight. And, um... Thank you all for helping us producing global citizens for the city of Taunton. We really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Wonderful. As we revert over to the next part of the program, it's the school committee recognition of staff in the Taunton Public Schools. Of course, we know that these students could not succeed without the help and support of all staff members, whether you're an educator, or custodian, or any level. So we really appreciate the next set of awards coming up also. From the Edmund Hatch Bennett Elementary School, we have instructional coach Kristy Luparon.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kristy Luparon, and I am the instructional coach at Bennett Elementary School. On behalf of Mr. Kelleher, Mrs. Trot, and myself, it is our pleasure to recommend Ms. Alyssa Casey for recognition of her outstanding dedication to her students and her profession. As a new teacher, Alyssa has gone above and beyond what is expected of her, demonstrating a level of commitment that is truly exceptional. You'll often see her collaborating with her grade-level team, reaching out to families and building relationships with her colleagues. Alyssa has consistently created engaging and innovative lessons that have inspired her students to learn and grow, and has provided individualized support to students who are struggling. Her enthusiasm and passion for teaching is infectious, and her ability to connect with her students on a personal level has created a positive and welcoming classroom environment. Alyssa possesses a unique ability to touch lives, inspire minds, and ignite a passion for learning. She is a shining example of dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to her students. Alyssa is a true asset to the teaching profession and is deserving of recognition for her hard work and dedication. Thank you.
Wonderful. Next up, from the Joseph Martin Middle School, we have principal Jamie Pereira.
Hello. Good evening, members of the school committee and other guests of Taunton Public Schools. Like, I'm echoing the statement that many of you said, tonight is always a wonderful night because it gives us an opportunity to see so much good work that's going on in all the buildings across the district. It just really makes me proud to be a member of Taunton Public Schools. But I'm especially proud tonight because it gives me the opportunity to introduce you to three exceptional people that work at Martin Middle School. So please allow me to introduce Christine Tarpe. Dallas O'Hagan. And Kim Kelly, who unfortunately could not be here tonight due to a prior commitment, but she extends her thanks and appreciation for this recognition. These three amazing educators work in Martin's RISE program. And if you give me a moment to explain to you, because some of you may not know what the RISE program is. So the RISE program, which I learned today from Christine Tarpe, stands for Reaching Independence Through Structured Education. We house the middle school level of the RISE program. I know that Claudine and East Taunton Elementary house the elementary school program. And these amazing educators work with some of our most vulnerable students, our highest need students, who have the greatest level of need and may be described as having severe disabilities. But I can honestly say that working with these two individuals, and Kim as well, they don't see it as a disability. The pure joy that they have with working with our students is unbelievable. And I often put myself, as I am a parent, and I know many of you are, I always try to look through that perspective. And I thought, I think, if I was a parent of a child with disability, the amazing amount of trust that they put into these educators every day is unbelievable. And these educators rise to deserve that trust. That students in our program don't often have the ease or ability to go home and communicate what their day looked like, not as maybe some of the other students at Martin. But these teachers take the moments to share with our, and communicate with our families through anecdotes, and messages, and pictures, so that those kids can go home and those families can extend that learning, and speak about their day, and continue to have those moments and share those moments with their kids. But beyond that, these teachers believe in our kids. They believe in those kids. They have expectations of them. I was just making sure I had the numbers correctly, that some students in our program take the Alternative MCAS, which is a binder portfolio-type MCAS exam. And Dallas, what was your number again this year?
Three.
Three students in Dallas's classroom transitioned to the online exam, the typical MCAS exam. That is a huge accomplishment. And Christine, last year, cannot be undone for that because you had five students, right, Christine?
Well, I have five students this year.
Yes, five students this year. So that's eight students in our RISE program that took the typical MCAS. Now, many of us look at the MCAS as a, you know, a standard of measure, but the fact that we have students that felt they were capable of it, because they know that they had teachers that believed in them, supported them, and got them there, and gave them the courage, and just shown on their ability that they could do that, that's outstanding. But I also want to share some interesting, fun little stories about them, too. So aside from the fact that they know that these students are capable, they work as a team. We recently just had a scheduling meeting where we met with some of our friends from East Taunton, and some of our friends from Pol, and we were looking at our incoming students, and they were fighting over their students. Because through the program, we have all three grade levels. We have fifth, sixth, and seventh. And they were bartering as to who was going to get who, and I want this one, and they didn't want to let their kids go, even though they knew they were ready for the next step or for the next advancement in the next classroom. So that was just absolutely such a pleasure to see. And I work with Amy, and I work with Kim Morton and Jen Mullins, and they were saying the same things, that like, wow, that's really impressive that these teachers genuinely love their kids and so happy to have them. And there was just such a sense of team between them as well. There's no, I will say, the only ego in the room is who's going to get the best kid and who that they really, really want to work with for the year. And it's quite, it's quite heartening to see. But there's some cute moments, too. Kim Kelly wasn't here, isn't here tonight, but I remember her calling me down, saying, Jamie, Jamie, you've got to come down. It's the coronation, it's the coronation. So I went down to her classroom, and it was King Charles's coronation, and all her kiddos had beautiful crowns on, they were all decorated and bejeweled, and they had a crown for me. And it was, it was just a great moment. And I know that one of my, one of our fun RISE moments made improving Taunton even, because Christine Tarpe came down to me and said, Jamie, I just realized that we could convert PBIS points, because we're a PBIS school, so it's a positive, you know, students will earn points for positive behaviors. And one of her students, Ish, so desperately wants to be a police officer, that he often will dress in his costume as a police officer to stand security for our, our school dances and our school activities. And we let Ish do it because he's fantastic. And Christine had the idea of having Ish get a ride in one of our SRO vehicles. And we could not have had such a wonderful idea. And Taunton PD, it was the highlight of everyone's day, the energy that came from just that experience. We all wanted that for Ish. And all, the PD brought out all the stops. They had the newest vehicles, they had the lights flashing. Yeah, some people didn't know what was going on at Martin School that day, but we were recognizing Ish. And I had to make sure I called over to Central and said, this is a good thing, this is a good thing. But, you know, we have lots of moments like that, and I can say that these teachers really just impact their kids in the best way possible. They are doing God's work. I think of a quote that I recently read, you know, in education, we read quotes about teaching and what it means to work with different types of kids. And there was a quote that says, "A child with special needs will inspire you to be a special kind of person." And these teachers are those special kind of people. So I am very honored and inspired by them every day, and it's my honor to introduce them to you and let you have a moment to celebrate them as well. So, thank you.
All righty. Next up, we have from the James Mulcahy Elementary School, Principal Kathleen Decuta.
Good evening. Thank you for welcoming Mulcahy School to the school committee recognition tonight. The first person that I'm recognizing is Carla Walsh, and thank you to her friends and colleagues for getting her here in secret. And it worked. Carla Walsh is currently a fourth-grade teacher at Mulcahy Elementary School and has been with the Taunton Public Schools since 2001. Prior to teaching fourth grade, Carla worked as a job share substitute and a second-grade teacher. When I first met Carla, she was a second-grade teacher at Hopewell. She was the teacher that her colleagues went to within her team for support and advice, not only with work concerns, but with life concerns. People gathered around the lunch table, sharing stories with the second-grade team and planning for upcoming curriculum. As a new member of the Hopewell staff and wearing a new hat as an instructional coach, I felt I had so much to learn and observed in being a new member of the Hopewell community. Carla welcomed me into her room, let me take students to teach, offered support in reading and math, and she shared materials with me to share with other staff. Carla opened her doors, even though I was new and not a member of the Hopewell school staff for a long time. Carla worked with her students in varying skill levels and never made any of her students feel as though they were different because they could not read the chapter books that their friends were reading, or doing the same math fact practice in her classroom. Carla treated her students fairly and with compassion. Carla taught small group lessons with ease and wanted to ensure that all her students were learning and progressing. She analyzed data at our data meetings, which were new to all of us, and she asked how to make changes within her content to support best practices and her students. Carla embraced and supported her students that were new to her classroom and new to our country that did not speak any English walking through her door. She called upon the ESL teachers, instructional coach, myself, classroom teachers, the technology department, to find out and make sure that we had the latest technology for the students to use in the classroom, to ask simple questions as, where is the bathroom? What time is lunch? After several years of teaching in grade two, an opening took place in fourth grade, and Carla moved up to the third floor. Carla became a valued member of the fourth-grade team, and you could see the team planning together daily and in collaboration, which was amazing. Carla outside of the classroom could be seen facilitating PTO meetings, functions, and serving as the Hopewell PTO board member as the treasurer for years after not having anyone to fill the position. She attended events in order to make sure they went smoothly. She hosted and helped facilitate our first trunk-or-treat at Hopewell School on a Saturday night, and brought as many staff members as she could to help us. When the school merged, Carla could be seen galloping in the front foyer with her colleague, Liz Negron, and dressed in inflatable Mustang for rodeo day. I am grateful for the time that I had been able to work alongside Carla and learn not only about her as a teacher, but as a person who has passion for Beagles, the character Snoopy, her family, and her friends. Carla will be missed at Mulcahy and by her colleagues that she has worked with and over the many years at Taunton Public Schools. Thank you for your dedication to the students of Taunton and for being such a passionate person. The next person that I'd like to recognize is Liz McGreevy, who with the help of her family, was able to get her here in secrecy, not knowing that her mom was in the hospital as I'm texting her and saying, you don't know who I am, but I need your help. So thank you to her sister and her family for getting her here tonight. Liz McGreevy is a speech-language pathologist at Mulcahy School. I've had the pleasure of working with and observing Liz work her magic in our school. In the past several years, I have become familiar with Liz as an amazing pathologist that goes above and beyond for her students and the teachers that she works with. Liz began her career with TPS in 2016, and I have worked the past five years with her through a pandemic, school closure, school opening, and the merger. During the pandemic, Liz worked with families over the phone, online, and doing outreach by mailing packets of work that focused solely on each student's particular skill, as well as mailing items to homes and to support students that were having a difficult time adjusting to our new normal of being home during COVID. One family could not wait to share with me that Liz sent a tent to their house so that their child had a space at home in order to feel safe and secure while doing their learning. Liz supports students within our classroom, offers resources to teachers to try in class, helps staff when they have questions about expressive and receptive language skills, and supports staff during our student support meetings. Liz has an amazing way about her when she is teaching her small group lessons, and has many procedures in place that allows students to flourish in her groups. She uses the latest research-based strategies in curriculum and is always looking for ways to include all students within our school community. Last year, Liz was on a mission. Her mission was to improve communication for some of our students that needed assistive technology. Liz was working towards increasing our capacity to meet the complex communication needs of our students with ASD and developmental delay. Specifically, she was seeking to build an AAC library, including mid-tech and high-tech, alternative and augmentative communication devices and application. Liz researched grants and funding and matched with the Allison Keller Education Technology Program that is part of the Doug Flutie Foundation. Liz wrote a grant application for iPads, AAC software, and mid-level tech from Mulcahy School. In doing this, Liz needed recommendations from the Special Education Department with Amy Morninghand and myself. But in order to write a recommendation, you have to understand what she's asking for. So I asked a lot of questions, did a lot of research, and wrote a recommendation, as well as Amy Morninghand. Liz is the reason why we are granted funding for over $5,000 and to purchase the technology for our students. Liz is an amazing member of our education program at Mulcahy School. Daily, she's in classrooms working with our students within our RISE program, making Daily, she's in classrooms working with our students within our RISE program, making sure they have exactly what they need. She runs small groups in her office, classroom, and also within the RISE classrooms. You can see her facilitating small group lessons with her other RISE teachers. In addition, Liz and her other speech pathologists have facilitated trainings and parent nights to show our families how to use the technology. I'm extremely grateful that Liz is such an amazing person and dedicated member of the Mulcahy School community. I know that all of us that work with Liz are incredibly lucky and would be lost without her insight and knowledge. Thank you. I'm not sure if the last person I'm recognizing is here, but Lorna Tabacos. She's been hiding on me. She's very upset that I did this. She has great looks. Lorna is a gift. I first met Lorna five years ago when I became the principal of Mulcahy School. Lorna was a substitute teacher that worked in many of the classrooms during my first year and a half, and then the pandemic came, and I didn't see Lorna for a long time. Once the school, new school opened, we didn't see Lorna because we were fully remote and we had stuff, our own staff jumping in to cover classrooms and vacancies during the pandemic. So where was Lorna and who is Lorna? She's a retired teacher from the Taunton Public Schools who began teaching her career in 1975. I may have been just four years old at the time. Lorna officially retired from teaching and having her own classroom several years ago in 2010. But lucky for me, she became a TPS substitute and chose to support Mulcahy students, staff, and community. She's been a teacher for 48 years. In August of 2021, I reached out to Lorna and asked if she would be interested in covering a maternity leave for a staff member that worked in our RISE program. And it did not take her long to jump in, and she never missed a beat. She worked alongside a wonderful educational assistant, Kelly Plude, and our RBT. She met with parents, attended IEP meetings, and worked to ensure that the students had the necessary materials and curriculum each day. As that long-term position was coming to a close, I reached out to Lorna again and asked if she would be willing to stay for the rest of the year and cover another maternity leave in second grade in room 208. She agreed to provide the support the students needed with compassion and energy that that classroom needed. She was the perfect fit and match for room 208. So as the year closed and we had students leaving and staff taking new positions, Amy Morninghan reached out to Lorna over the summer and asked if she'd be willing to do a long-term position, but it might be all year long. Lorna agreed again. And that summer, Lorna and her daughter spent time preparing the classroom, setting up the room, arranging furniture, making bulletin boards, shopping, and getting it ready to greet students, even though she might not be there all year. I am extremely grateful that Lorna has agreed over and over again to support the students and school community of Mulcahy and Taunton Public Schools. We all have watched her work her magic with so many students and parents as they adore her and request her over and over again, even though she's only a substitute. Lorna jumps in as needed and is seen dancing in the room with her students, running during the fun run, facilitating breaks and academics without missing one beat. Lorna not only works at Mulcahy, but is a teacher at Bristol Community College and works to support families within the community. Lorna and I ran into each other at the United Way Drive where I was working in November, and Lorna was picking up meals for her families that she taught at Bristol Community College. So not only within Mulcahy School, but also within the Taunton School community, Lorna is helping our families. Lorna is a giving and gracious person. She gives of herself and never asks for anything in return. I'm most grateful that Lorna keeps saying yes to Mulcahy and the students that she teaches, but she has informed me that she's going to be helping her granddaughter next year in her homeschooling adventure. So this is our last year with Lorna, which makes me very sad, but I know she's going to be doing what she needs to do for her family. So thank you for your continued support and passion for all students at Taunton Public Schools. Thank you.
Alrighty, next up from the Benjamin Friedman Middle School, we have Principal Danielle Coog.
Thank you. The first award tonight is actually going to be presented by Mrs. Maria McNally and Jenna Whalen, who will be honoring our school adjustment counselor, Liz Palenskar, who absolutely loves attention more than anyone in this whole room. So make sure you pay close attention. Mrs. McNally.
Okay. Thanks. Without regard to personal inconvenience of any kind, Liz, Palenskar is always willing to help any student in need, even if they're not on her caseload. Students and staff rely on her for intervention, advice, and students drop by her office for a bottle of water, a piece of candy, anything they need to get them through the day. Ms. P., as she's affectionately known, always has students by her side or in her office. You can never get a minute alone with her, really, and maintains a positive attitude and sense of humor despite the many challenges presented in her work. I recall a time, I think it was last year, Liz came to pick up an angry student. And when we saw her later, we asked how it went, and Liz deadpanned, "Yeah, great. He fired me." So I always thought that was pretty good. On a personal note, Ms. Palenskar is going out of her way to help Ms. Whalen and I through a very challenging year, often stopping by in the morning or after school to check on our students and listen to our concerns. She's always ready to pitch in, even outside her own responsibilities. Recently, I found myself unexpectedly covering two concurrent after-school clubs, but without being asked, it was Ms. P. to the rescue. She stayed and visited with the club members, reappeared at three o'clock for dismissal, and then voluntarily walked a student over to Chamberlain for extended day. This is just typical of Liz's dedication every day to her students and to her school. And we thank you so much, Liz.
Thank you. Because you all don't want to go home, I'm going to continue on. And I would like to honor, along with Ms. Green and Mr. Menard, three of our retirees that are leaving Friedman Middle School this year, and our school is not going to be the same without them. So Ms. Green is going to first introduce Ms. Manning, who's our guidance secretary extraordinaire. It doesn't matter what's going wrong. Mrs. Mayer is calm, cool, and collective. So, Ms. Green?
Good evening. Mrs. Manning has been an integral part of our well-oiled machine at Friedman Middle School since 2009. She is our amazing guidance secretary and works tirelessly on a daily basis to make sure our students and families get what they need in order to be part of our Friedman family. She is very detail-oriented and never misses a beat. She keeps everyone up to date in regards to our new students and those that have moved from Friedman. In these upstate updates, you can always expect an inspirational quote or some words of encouragement. If there is a time at Friedman that someone is feeling down, go to Mrs. Manning, and there is no doubt she will cheer you up. She's an amazing listener and will have you feeling happy and encouraged in no time. She tells the best stories of her family and her time in Illinois. Her love for quilting is displayed in her office. We will miss seeing these beautiful designs that she makes. She has made a huge difference in the lives of the staff at Friedman and our students. She will be missed dearly. Mrs. Manning, we wish you the best in your retirement. Enjoy endless amounts of gardening and quilting. Don't forget to stop by once in a while or email us some words of encouragement. We will miss you.
It is with great pride that I stand before you to deliver this speech honoring the great Nancy Leclair. Once a programmer, Mrs. Leclair became a stay-at-home mom attending Bridgewater part-time and eventually pursuing a degree in education. She began her teaching career at Parker Middle School, but quickly found her way over to 500 Norton Ave, becoming a loving educator in the Friedman family. Mrs. Leclair would spend the next 20 years teaching and inspiring, taking part in more committees, clubs, and school events than one can count. Whether it was winning it all during the academic challenge days or playing a key role in the development of Friedman's character education program, Mrs. Leclair gave 110% each day she walked through our front doors. Through class discussions, meditations, or Friday morning dance parties, her desire to ensure that all students felt included, comfortable, and safe while in her classroom has been unmatched by any other. This has all been, this has all been done while maintaining the highest of expectations from every student that has walked through her front door. Mrs. Leclair is a mentor to many, myself included, during my time at Friedman. I will miss her checking in on me, simply asking how my day was going, and her positive words of encouragement that always followed. Mrs. Leclair would always keep me on track when it came to our character education program, rightfully honoring those students in a timely fashion that helped make a positive impact on our schools. Mrs. Leclair knew how to lift me up, and just like our students, always pushed me to be the better version of myself. Mrs. Leclair, while Friedman will be missing a huge part of its family next year, I know that your own family will be looking forward to all the additional time they will be gaining with you. Thank you for all that you have done for us at Friedman, for all that you have done for each and every one of your students, and all that you have done for the Taunton Public School system. Happy retirement. Congratulations. You'll be missed by all.
Alright, so that was fun. We have one last incredible man to honor today. And I tried not to cry, Mrs. Manning. That didn't work. And Mrs. Leclair, forget about it. And now we have Mr. Bright. Where were you 53 years ago? The year was 1969. Sorry, Lorna. He beat you. And Mr. Bright bravely walked into Kohanet Middle School as a sixth-grade teacher. Insta- insta- ugh. Interestingly enough, his first class also included my father. Fast forward to 1999, I was a conscientious student sitting in Mr. Bright's second-floor science class. Biv, as he was affectionately called, stood before the class lecturing us about Newton's law of gravity. Inevitably, one of my not-so-lovely peers threw something out one of the massive windows, claiming he was testing out Biv's theory on gravity. As predictable as the laws of motion, Mr. Bright began to yell at my classmate for his poor decision. However, as the year progressed, it became blatantly clear that the Kohanet Chiefs were a tight-knit family. Mr. Bright loved his students. He would go above and beyond to ensure that each one of his students understood every single scientific concept he was presenting. Unspenosed to us middle school students, he was quietly teaching us about life. Fast forward many years later, I had the honor to teach with Mr. Bright. Every now and again, I would have a student come up to me and tell me that he named Mr. Bright Biv. I quietly laughed to myself, knowing all the while Mr. Bright had been Biv for a very long time. Another family tradition that transcended schools resided in the insistent need for students to run up to Mr. Bright and flip his tie. Much like his predictableness of the law of gravity, Biv would pretend to be angry. However, his students knew they were truly loved by their humble teacher. More recently, I worked with Mr. Bright as the assistant principal and principal of Friedman. Day in and day out, I would continue to witness Mr. Bright not only teaching his students the laws of science, but also the countless life lessons. One day, I noticed several students going out to the parking lot with Mr. Bright. I naturally asked, "What is going on?" He assured me that everything was okay, but those gentlemen had earned themselves detention. Unfortunately, on the same day, Mr. Bright had a flat tire. Naturally, Mr. Bright sees the teachable moment. He took the three gentlemen outside and taught them how to change a tire. Once again, proving his love for his students went far beyond the classroom. Mr. Bright's favorite day of the year is taking his students to WaterWiz. With a quick blink of an eye, it's not hard to imagine the young man who began teaching 53 years ago. As he goes down each slide, he explains to a few eager students the merits of making an efficient slide. Personally, I love watching the pure joy that radiates out of him. Much like the slides at WaterWiz, Mr. Bright told me just today, he quietly slid into his career, and he wants to silently, quietly slide out. Friedman will not be the same without his remarkable dedication of Mr. Bright. His passion for science, his humble demeanor, his empathy, and his willingness to help everyone are the pillars of a great educator, remarkable man, and the legend that is Biv. Congratulations.
As we conclude this evening's program, you just witnessed a small fraction of our amazing students and our amazing staff, whether they're educators or support staff in and outside of the classroom. And the commitment of the school committee here tonight is to support not only our educators, our staff, but support our students. And we take that very seriously every, every day. So, Mr. Cabral, do you have anything to say before we head off?
I always tend to think that I come to these nights thinking I'm going to be surprised, I'm going to be, but I'm never surprised because we have tremendous students, we have outstanding staff who go above and beyond to give our kids, to give our school system, to give our community what they need. So as a superintendent at Taunton Public Schools with two students who attend Taunton Public Schools, I'm blessed to lead this school system, and it is an honor to serve this community. So thank you for all that you give and for all that you give back to the school system and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
I would just like to say something. My youngest son had the pleasure of having Biv for a teacher, and I used to say, "What does that mean?" does that mean? And I was told it was blue indigo and violet, the last three, yeah, colors of the spectrum and the rainbow. And I figured he certainly was a rainbow for all of these students who really did appreciate him. And he was one of my husband's high school classmates at Coil, so I've known him for a long time, and congratulations to him. And I know he's touched a lot of lives, and that's what's the most important thing, where you leave a mark, and he certainly did. Thank you for that.
Good. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Dier, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good night.